Good evening. I would like to call this Board Business Meeting to order. It is Monday, June 10th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in executive session for approximately 45 minutes on Monday, June 3rd to discuss a personnel matter. They also met prior to this meeting to review the Personnel Report, School Safety and Security Report, and a Student Discipline Issue. This meeting lasted about an hour. And now, we have a lot of great recognitions tonight, so I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Petrino, tonight, we are recognizing our high school softball team, our high school Odyssey of the Mind team, our technical high school students for their Skills USA State Competition, as well as our doubles team from Plymouth White Marsh High School. We have much to be proud of. To kick it off, I'd like to introduce Coach Perez from the softball team. Mike, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, and esteemed members of the Colonial School Board. I want to first thank you for taking the time tonight to recognize our team, and thank you, Jess Lester, for inviting us and setting it all up with me as well. After graduating two seniors last year, including our starting pitcher, we knew coming into this season that we had a big question mark to get over. But we knew with eight returning starters and a bunch of talented and eager underclassmen that we would be in a good place. So, starting last fall, we came into our offseason workouts hungry to get started with lofty goals in mind. Through the gym, in the weight room, on the field, the entire program worked hard the entire offseason. Trying to work around our senior trip to Disney and spring break, the season started with four games in four days, with big wins over division rival Abington and state qualifier Boyertown, and tough losses to two of the top teams in the state, Quakertown and Council Rock South, who just advanced to the state final a couple hours ago. We found ourselves sitting at 2-2, not exactly where we wanted to be at that point. So, it was time for some soul searching over spring break. It came at a good time for some rest and relaxation. We came back in April with a new mindset and some new goals in mind. We started April out with an unprecedented 13 straight wins, including wins against fifth-ranked Haverford and the previously unbeaten Quakertown. The win streak put our record at 15-2, beating our season totals from the previous two years, and moved us all the way up to number two in the PIAA District One rankings. After a tough loss to Westchester East and an 11-1 victory at Wissahicken, that capped off our regular season and secured a share of the Liberty Division League Title with a 15-1 record in the Suburban One League. That 15-1 record was also the best in-league record for the entire 24-team Suburban One League. This is the program's first league title since 2008, and only the third in program history. So, we've been staring at that banner in gym west, waiting to add our contribution, and we're excited to know that 2024 will soon still be on that list. We finished the regular season with a 17-3 overall record. We outscored our opponents 187-52 for an average margin of victory of seven runs per game, increasing our offensive production from the previous year and lowering our run totals allowed. The offseason work surely did pay off. While we suffered abrupt end and unexpected loss in round two of our district playoffs, the season was filled with many great memories and accomplishments that the girls should be very proud of. The 17 wins on the season is presumably the most in regular season program history, and our senior class finished their four-year run with 60 wins and a 712 regular season winning percentage, while increasing the team's win totals each year since they arrived. So, I'm going to take a quick minute to highlight our three of the seniors that are here with us in attendance. Senior Marissa Perez is a four-year starter and three-year captain, who started all 89 games during her PW career. She's a four-time All-League Award winner, three-time All-Area, and was named to the All-State Team last year as a junior, and will hopefully match those accolades again this season when they are announced. In the last game of her PW career, she reached the prestigious 100-hit mark for her career, a milestone that few, if any, PW softball players have ever reached. Marissa will be studying exercise science and playing softball next season at East Strausberg University. Senior Sam Skyvo is a three-year starter and team captain, who has led the team in many offensive categories over the last two years. Her growth as a player and leader is an integral part of our success. She is a three-time All-League member, earning first-team honors this season, and will undoubtedly be a three-time All-Area player and hopefully a first-time All-State player when the awards are announced later this month. Sam will be studying business and playing softball next season at Babson College in Massachusetts. Senior Marissa Karaluzi has also been a varsity member for three years and has served as a team captain this year. She battled through some injuries, and her grit and determination were admirable and set a great example for our younger players. On senior night in her final bat with PW, Marissa knocked in the winning runs with a big two-run double to end the game. She'll be studying nursing at South Carolina University next fall. While our seniors have made a huge impact on our program and will certainly be missed, this team has much more than just our seniors. Some other notable contributions this season included junior pitchers Ryan Reed and Madison Moran, both eclipsing the 100-strikeout mark for their careers and anchoring our pitching staff. Juniors Kalina Childers and Ryan Reed were both named to All-League First Team. Ryan was actually named First Team and Second Team for two different positions. Sophomores Anna Powell and Jocelyn Perez were both named to All-League Second Team and were major contributors to our offensive attack and defensive play. Junior Madison Moran and sophomore Emily Dobrowski were also both awarded All-League Honorable Mention for their excellent play. Including our seniors, we had 10 players named to All-League Honors, and again, hope that continues in our All-Area and All-State teams as they are announced later this month. So, now, I would like to recognize the team members who are in attendance for their contributions for our season's success. Girls, as I mentioned your name, please come forward. Our seniors, Marissa Karaluzi. Yep, you got it today. Senior Marissa Perez. And our amazing team manager Bailey Riley. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Plymouth White Marsh High School Odyssey of the Mind Team. I believe we have Jeanette DeGuzman and Steve Hormel here this evening to help us recognize our students.
Thank you, Dr. Christian, members of the Board and the community. If you don't know, Odyssey of the Mind is a creative problem-solving competition where teams work all season to create a solution to a long-term problem, which they present in the form of a skit. At competition, they are also evaluated on their ability to work together effectively and creatively to meet challenges on the spot. This team started, meeting last September, with the express goal of qualifying for World Finals. In spite of being busy with their many other activities and commitments, including being some of the creative forces behind PW's Film Production Club, these kids worked countless hours to reach that goal, and they crushed it. They qualified for Worlds by placing second in the state, and then they took it further. At World Finals, this amazing group competed against 37 teams from around the United States and five other countries, and surpassed all our expectations by coming in third in the world for their problem and division. You know, there are districts that send busloads of teams to the competitions, even schools that send five, 10 teams to Worlds each year. Our district might not have the biggest program, but this team proves that we have the talent, the creativity, and the drive to succeed even on the world stage. So, while I'm here, I'd like to make a plea to the district to take steps to make sure that this program continues. Three teams that we had this year were older middle school and high school teams. Without students getting involved at the lower levels, like in the 4-5 school, this program is in danger of petering out when these kids move on. I know some of these team members will not compete next year, but even if they are not, they are determined to do what they can to strengthen the district's Odyssey of the Mind program, and I hope the district will as well. Now that I've said that, I'll introduce them. Steve Hormel and I have worked with most of these students since middle school. We are in awe of how far they've come and so proud of what they've accomplished. Seeing them honored on the stage at World Finals in front of thousands of people is something that we'll always cherish. And with that, we'll introduce Ry Bass.
Thank you, and congratulations to our Odyssey of the Mind team. Next, I'd like to recognize Colleen Kriebel. Our Central Monco Technical High School students participate annually in the Skills USA Stink Competition, and I believe we have some medal winners to recognize.
Yes, you do. Thank you for having me. This is my first year ever as a teacher and first year ever as a Skills USA Coordinator, so I didn't really prepare myself, but thank you for having me. I'll tell you a little bit about Skills USA. It's where my career began. I started out as a competitor, just like these gentlemen here, and I won some competitions and won some medals, and literally, in this school, PW School District Alumni, is where it all began for me. So, I'm so eager to give you guys these certificates. It is a school CTSO, so it's a student-run organization, Skills USA, and they compete in school competitions. When they win in their classroom competition, they, you know, go on to district. At districts, if they win there, they go to states, and if they win states, they go to nationals. Well, this year, we had our district competition, and we won a couple silver medals there, and then we also went to states and won silver there. So, without further ado, I'd like to present Andrew A.J. Gilgrego. Come on up. Oh, A.J. and Luke. Sorry, A.J. and Luke competed in audio-radio production at states, and they won the silver medal. And James Breen competed in the District Two Competition in Cabnetry and won the silver medal.
If I could, congratulations to our skills competition winners. Great job. If I could ask James Fassbender and Janay Shath to come to the podium, please? Coach Rickard could not be here tonight, so she shared with me some of your accomplishments this season. Congratulations to James and Janay for their achievements during the season at Plymouth White Marsh High School. The men's tennis team went 8-1 and finished second in the league. Janay, a freshman, won the Suburban One Singles Tournament, qualifying him for the PIAA Singles Tournament. Janay won his first round in the tournament before falling to the fifth-seeded player. He was named to the First Team for Singles for the Suburban One League. James, a junior, finished third in the Suburban One League Singles Tournament, which also qualified him for the District One Tournament. James was also named to the First Team Singles in the Suburban One League. James and Janay paired as one of the two doubles teams representing Plymouth White Marsh at the Suburban One League Doubles Tournament. They won all of their matches and successfully earned first place at the Doubles Tournament to represent Plymouth White Marsh at the PIAA Doubles Tournament. At that tournament, they beat the sixth seeded team from Connaughtsoga in three sets. In the second round, they beat the Doubles Team from Quakertown High School. Well, I think you believe, that's who you defeated in the Suburban One Championship, right?
Yeah.
I don't play tennis. I watch tennis, and you guys are awesome. In the third round, unfortunately, they lost to a formidable third-seeded team from Pen Crest, but they did earn the right to, in the playbacks, participate in the playbacks. In the fourth-round match, they lost a tough match to Henderson High School in the third set. This is the furthest that any Plymouth White Marsh team has made it in the district tournament in recent years. Congratulations on a tremendous season, gentlemen. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations to everyone. Now, we will move on with the meeting. This evening, this is a motion to approve minutes as presented in items 4B through 4E, which include Board Business Meeting, Finance Committee Meeting, FMT Committee Meeting, and HR Committee Meeting. May I have a second? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for May. May I have a second? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the May 2024 Treasurers Report. May I have a second? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, are there any public comments on any items on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Christian for tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you. Board action is requested for the attached personnel changes, summer program appointments, and extracurricular appointments. Appointments for promotion, employment or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state-mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Jeremy, new business.
Motion to approve and adopt the 2024-2025 final budget totaling $158,174,696, which includes a real estate tax rate of $25,678, an increase of 2.63%. The 2024-2025 final budget totals $158,174,696, which is an increase of $7,021,496, or 4.65% over the 2023-2024 spending plan. The final budget includes a real estate tax of $25.67, an increase of .658, or 2.63%. The new real estate tax equates to an additional $65.78 per year for each $100,000 of taxable assessed value, or an increase of $101.19 on the district's median assessed value of homestead property, which is $153,780. The 2024-2025 final budget in the state provided, in the state-required format, utilizing Form PDE 2028, is attached and is available for public review on the district's website.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Item B.
Motion to approve the 2024-2025 taxation rates, fees, and billing dates as presented.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. C. Bit approvals?
Motion to approve bids for art supplies, general, school supplies, and paper products for the 2024-2025 school year as outlined below.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Jeremy, item D.
Motion to approve the administration's recommendation to fund the costs of the projects outlined below with the surplus of funds available from the Colonial Middle School project.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to approve the revisions to Policy Number 351, Drug and Substance Abuse, and Policy 614, Payroll Authorization on a First Read Basis as Presented.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Jeremy, board policy revisions?
Motion to approve revisions to Policy Number 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance on a Second Read Basis.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the tentative strips, trips, and academic athletic competitions that our PW High School and CMS students will participate in during the 24-25 school year as presented. These trips are out of state or require an overnight stay.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments?
Just that we do this annually, so that when teams or organizations, whether it's Odyssey of the Mind, sports, athletic teams, sometimes students qualify, and the next competition is within a week, and there's not another board meeting. So, this automatically, and it's board policy to approve all overnight and out-of-state trips.
All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve rental rates for the 24-25 before and after-school programs in all elementary schools, and 2024 summer camp program at $47.12 per day and $172.63 per day, respectively.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Jeremy?
Motion to approve the Colonial School District's cost plan, which includes services purchased through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. The proposed preliminary cost for the 2024-2025 school year is $1,043,068.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the educational services for the 2024-2025 school year as outlined below. There's quite a few, so we're not going to read through them, but please know that they're listed for your convenience.
May I have a second? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to approve the physician-dentist agreement for the 24-25 school year as presented.
May I have a second? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the agreement with General Healthcare Resources Incorporated to provide substitute nursing and substitute instructional aid services effective July 1st, 2024, as presented.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the administrative assistant compensation and benefit agreement for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, as presented.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the payroll specialist's benefit and wage summary for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, as presented.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve administration's recommendation to continue the appointment of Ms. Colleen Techman, Human Resources Manager, as Colonial School District's Management Trustee on the Bucks and Montgomery County Schools Healthcare Consortium effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Is there a solicitor's report this evening?
There is not.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to committee reports. Their curriculum, Sharon?
No report. No report.
CES renovations. The footings and the concrete for the new district office main entrance are complete. The demolition on the second floor of the district office is complete. The steel is expected to be delivered second or third week of June, and the second floor concrete is scheduled to be poured in early August. There's also a number of summer projects, the tennis court work, synthetic track, elementary school emergency generators, PW Science Wing chiller project, and the replacement of the main office AC at Plymouth Elementary. Mr. Lally reviewed a few before and after pictures of the Bus Depot House, which has been updated to be used as offices. Mr. Lally mentioned Mr. Baroon and the maintenance staff have done a great job at getting the house ready for the staff to start moving to the new temporary location.
Thank you. Finance.
No report.
Thank you. HR?
No report.
The tech school, I'll just give a brief report. Congratulations to all our tech students. They had an amazing graduation, I believe it was about a week and a half ago, so congratulations to all of them on all of their hard work this year. Intermediate Unit, Mark?
Just one update that I submitted to some members of the board with regards to a presentation that was provided at the intermediate unit on pre-K counts, which is a high-quality pre-K education provided to three- and four-year-olds across the Commonwealth. And although we don't host a pre-K counts here, young children and families are able to apply to the program, and the requirements are to be three, between three, at the age of kindergarten, and have a family income between 130 and 300% of federal poverty guidelines.
Thank you. Sharon, legislative?
Just that there has been some recent updates, excuse me, recent updates to some of the Title IX legislation in terms of amendments and the requirements for school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. And so we just talked about that at our committee meeting, and continuing to support an equitable funding formula for charter cyber schools and our brick-and-mortar schools.
Any community liaison reports?
White Marsh Township. In honor of Juneteenth, the White Marsh Art Center will host the Transformative Power of Art at Abolition Hall from June 19th through 23rd. Registration for White Marsh Township's Summer Camps is now open. This summer, the popular reels and refreshments are happening at various parks throughout the township, with the first occurring June 26th at Leland Park. Sprinkler in the Parks is also back, and you can find details about these events along with schedules, locations at whitmarshtownship.org. Click on the Parks and Rec tab.
Thank you.
Love it. And just to add, Conchalken also offers similar activities, so check out the Conchalken website as well, and fireworks will be July 3rd for anyone interested.
And then, CSD Education Foundation, Gail?
Just a couple of updates for, we had our last meeting for the year, May 29th, and then, as been reporting the last few months, October 13th is our foundation day, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Also attached to tonight's agenda for your information is the technology report, curriculum report, school activity accounts, and athletic activity accounts. And now for closing items, are there any public comments this evening?
I have two that came in via email that I'd like to share with the board. The first one is from Dr. Jamina Clay of Plymouth Meeting. Recently, I sent members of this board a presentation that my daughter Kennedy had completed at the high school. In fact, I sent you two very different, separate versions of the presentation. The one that she and her group completed and submitted, which was a lovely presentation on the Black is Beautiful movement, and the one with the changes they were asked to make, which was watered down to a presentation on acceptance. Last week, I had several conversations with the EIB Director and other district staff regarding this matter, and while I encouraged my daughter to come herself to the board to share how this incident impacted her, she is ready to move on. However, I am not. As her mother, it is my responsibility to be her voice when she is too tired, and that is why I am submitting public comment this evening. I want this incident to be recorded on the board record. My daughter and her peers created a presentation on Black is Beautiful movement because it was a topic of importance to them and aligned with what they were taught in their African-American AP class. They were encouraged to create edits by their teacher and other administration and staff members. I was told that this wasn't the case, but I have an email from Mr. Carosi with the subject line, Lesson Plan Edits. He sat down with the girls and shared from his notebook a list of changes that he needed them to make. Now, whether these changes came from him, the administration, or the staff at the 4-5 building doesn't matter. What matters is the district took their voice from them, eliminating the most powerful and necessary slides. Kennedy and her friends were once fifth graders at the 4-5 building. They created that presentation because they wanted the fifth-grade version of themselves to hear that it is okay to be black and that black is beautiful. They wanted the fifth-grade versions of themselves to know that it's okay to have broad noses and big lips and kinky hair, and that those features are also beautiful. The district took that chance away from them. It was said that they needed to present something that was age-appropriate, but as Kennedy said, "If I can experience it in fifth grade, they can learn about it in fifth grade." I completed my dissertation on the experiences of black students in predominantly white high schools. I interviewed former students in the Colonial area, and what stood out is one of my participants said to me, "I just wish they had told me it was okay to be black." The opportunity to do that was replaced and watered down, whitewashed, censored, presentation on acceptance. This is the experience that those girls will remember when they leave. This is the type of experience which is why your black students and students of color don't return to Colonial after they graduate. This is the type of experience that reiterates them, excuse me, reiterates to them that they are not safe here and that the equity work is performative and not impactful. So the next time someone quotes the mighty Messiah warriors and says to you, "And how are the children?", do not fix your lips to say, "The children are well," because they are not well, and they are telling you that, and you simply don't care. Submitted by Dr. Jamina Clay of Plymouth Meeting. I'll give a brief response to that. We certainly want all of our students to feel valued and supported. We're very proud that we're one of the first districts to offer the AP African-American class. Our intent for this activity was for our elementary and high school students to have a positive experience, and we will continue our equity, inclusion, and belonging efforts in earnest. Thank you. The second email is from Susan Barkley of Plymouth Meeting. Dear Colonial School District Administration, Teachers, and Staff, as we finish another year in this district, I just wanted to take a few minutes to share a few examples of another incredible year in Colonial for my three children. My son is in eighth grade and was a member of the Blue Team. As he heads off to high school in the fall, I am confident that he is wonderfully prepared for Plymouth White Marsh. He is entering PW with four honors courses and also has time to explore some of his other interests, thanks to the endless list of electives offered at the high school. He plays on the Plymouth White Marsh hockey team and is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. We couldn't be happier with his road from Ridge Park to Colonial Elementary, to CMS, and now PW. My youngest daughter is completing fourth grade at CES, where the transition from Ridge Park has been seamless. She loved her time with Mrs. Piccolo and Mrs. Heideck, and has grown so much from a little kid to a responsible, almost, fifth grader. She loved taking part in chorus and band and loved getting a taste of multiple teachers in CES. She is so excited for fifth grade. Last but not least, my middle daughter is wrapping up an amazing sixth-grade year at CMS. Overall, the year has been great, but one example tells the story. Her science teacher, Mrs. Stoffel, noticed that she was doing great in class and knew her stuff, but then seemed to struggle when test time came around. She met with us and asked us, asked how we can make a plan together to help her prepare properly and feel more confident for the end of semester test. She ended up acing the final. We were worried about the transition from CES to CMS, and her teachers have helped us feel so confident about what comes next for her. She became a more confident, independent learner while also taking part in band and no place for hate. She loved the end-of-the-day activity period where she got to learn about different interests that she can take into the, that she can take into the rest of her time at CMS and then on to Plymouth White Marsh. We have been Colonial residents from the start, and we cannot say enough about all the steps along the way for all three kids, who are all very different in nearly every way. Their teachers have taken time to get to know them and find the best ways for them to learn and grow, and we couldn't be more thankful. We hope the board, administration, and teachers have, excuse me, and staff have an amazing summer. Thank you, Susan Barkley, Plymouth Meeting. Lastly, before board comments, I would just like to thank our faculty, staff, administration, and the board for a great year. We're looking forward, very much forward, to commencement on Wednesday evening. Very exciting night for our students and their families. I started looking at the weather last night, and so far, so good. I think it'll be a great night, and just so happy for them. And then we have, we finish on Friday, full days all week, and then a half-day on Friday. So thanks to all of our staff for a great year, and thank you to the board for supporting the district. Thank you.
And I would just like to echo those same sentiments and say congratulations to the graduating class of, obviously, Wednesday night will be a great ceremony, but also I know there are move-up ceremonies in all the buildings, the third graders. I believe the fifth graders are tomorrow, and the eighth graders are on Thursday. And I just also want to say a thank you, because we don't have a meeting in July, to all of our staff that remain on campus all summer long, because that's when a lot of the hard work goes into place, and everybody's, you know, we're, as families, we're ending the year, but they're just starting the year up to get ready for, I won't say September, for the end of, the end of August. So thank you to everyone for a great year, and we're looking forward to next year. Anything else from anyone this evening? All right.
I just want to add quickly that I thank our, anytime anyone in the public has comments that they share with us via written or via in-person, it's just really great to hear from our community, and I just want to thank both of our folks who submitted comments this evening. Obviously, a lot to think about, so thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.